I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Latchmore, you will call attendance, please.
Trustee Pelkey.
Here.
Trustee Menard.
Here.
Trustee Southwick.
Present.
Trustee Arnold.
Present.
Mayor LaBounty.
Here. Nobody from the public has signed to address the board. I have, the next on the agenda would be minutes of the October 7, 2024 regular meeting. All the trustees should have a copy of that in their packet. Unless there's any changes or deletions in the printing of those minutes, I need a motion to accept them.
Accept the minutes as printed?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the October 7, 2024 regular minutes as printed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Bills, any deletions, additions, Mr. Luternal?
None this evening.
Okay. Everybody should have a copy of the bills in their packet. If there's any questions, we can discuss it. If not, then I need a motion to pay the bills as printed.
Make a motion to pay the bills as printed?
Second.
All those in favor of paying the bills as printed, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. And the ayes have it, the bills will be paid. Correspondence, Mr. Latchmore.
I have no correspondence this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Under myself, I'm going to read into the record about Resolution 24-23 Shared Service Agreement and Purchase of a Roller. Resolution, the village of Ross Point, village of Champlain, and the town of Champlain authorizing execution of a shared service agreement between the village of Ross Point, village of Champlain, and the town of Champlain and public works-related equipment. Whereas the Uniform Shared Services permits units of local government to share services for a particular purpose and to effectuate agreements for any service or circumstance that will aid and encourage a reduction of local expenses. And whereas the village of Ross Point, village of Champlain, town of Champlain are public bodies, corporate, and pol- uh, polack of the state of New York and are authorized under the state of New York law to enter into shared services agreement pursuant to the act. And whereas the village of Ross Point, village of Champlain, and town of Champlain desire to enter into a shared services agreement for the utilization of public works-related equipment and services. And whereas, representation of the village of Ross Point, village of Champlain, and town of Champlain have negotiated a shared services agreement in terms of which are incorporated in this resolution as if set for at length herein. And whereas, it is the intention of the parties that the new agreement will supersede and replace any previous shared service agreement for public works-related services. And whereas, in the best interest of the village of Ross Point, village of Champlain, town of Champlain to enter into the proposed municipal assistance, a shared service agreement as outlined in the shared services agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayors of, and the supervisor of the village of Ross Point, village of Champlain, and the town of Champlain as follows. That the appropriate officials be and hereby authorized to execute the shared service agreement with the village of Ross Point, village of Champlain, and the town of Champlain for the use of public works equipment and the services in substantially the form of the shared service agreement annexed heretofore and made part of. The purchase of the 2024 Bonang tandem roller in the amount of $50,332 under Source Well Contract Number 060122-B-A. Each municipality will be required to afford one-third of the cost, and the village of Ross Point being the lead agency. Three, the reimbursement cost will be divided by the Clinton County in the amount of one-half the purchase price over a three-year period for Personnel Director, Deputy County Administrator. Each reimbursement payment shall be divided equally per. Four, 2024 Bonang tandem roller will be stored in the village of Ross Point Public Works Building. Five, the cost of repair and maintenance will divide, will be divided equally by the three municipalities. This resolution shall take effect immediately. The question of the foregoing was duly put to vote on a roll call, which is resulted as follows. And we're going to have a discussion, or I will, if there's no discussion, I'll have the administrator take a roll call vote. Any questions in regards to this roller and the, and the shared services agreement?
I have one question. On the county, it says that they, the amount of one-half of the purchase?
Yes.
So they're going to pay half of the $50,000?
We're going to divide it by three and then we're going to pay his half?
Over, over three years.
Three years, that's correct.
So we're going to get our full reimbursement back?
No, we're going to get half of the $17,000. So what we're going to pay is approximately $800, $8200 for a $50,000 roller.
Okay, that's the only question I have.
The only thing I mentioned to Chris, he, Chris showed me the resolution, I went through it. I think the resolution is fine. We just need to make sure we do have an actual shared services agreement that's signed by the mayor, as well as the mayor of the village of Champlain, supervisor of the town of Champlain. Similar to other shared services agreements that we may have with them, but we do need to actually have a separate agreement. The resolution allows you to enter into it, but there has to be that separate agreement that each municipality is going to sign as well, agreeing to these same terms.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? If not, then I need a roll call vote, Mr. Latchmore.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor LaBounty.
Aye. The ayes have it. The roller will be purchased and shared among the three municipalities. I think it's a good thing moving forward. All three municipalities will be saving money and there's a use for it. We share services, but we pave our streets among ourselves. And this is just a cost-saving effort going forward for the three municipalities. So I believe this is good for the residents of all municipalities. That's all I have. Trustee Arnold, do you have?
Yes. Are we doing anything with the police, uh, with the police, the constable?
I don't, I don't think we are this evening, but we need to have a discussion.
I'm just wondering if we, we've got that on the back burner, or what are we doing, or?
As far as moving forward with it, I mean, we need to have a discussion about it. I mean, I will say this, in the, in the village code, there is a code section already designated to a village company. Now, looking through that, the local law pertaining to that at the time, the constable was working pretty much at that time under the police department, if you read the, the code section. So I think, I think that, that, that certainly that section needs to be tweaked. I think there's other issues involved, and Chris and I have talked a bit about this, whether it's some civil service or whatever the case may be. But there is a provision already in the village code which allows for constables. It's just, I think that if we need to amend that, that by local law, so it's not under the auspices of the village police department, which it was at the very beginning, now it'd be under the auspices of technically the mayor of the village board. So I think to move forward, we just need to, and I, I'm happy to prepare a proposed local law so that the board can review it and see what we think.
Absolutely, because the thinking behind this is the administrator and myself have been tied up for quite a, quite a bit of time for some of the businesses downtown that unfortunately, some people are over parking. They have apartments down there and it's not good for our businesses downtown because these parking spaces are provided for their customers. They have parking spots for the tenants and their, on their own property. We also, we also been involved in the village parking lot where we've had at least four to five vehicles that were uninsured, unexpected, unregistered, that we, Chris and I have had to get involved with to have them towed away. Because, you know, it's just taking away from my duties and the administrator's duties. I think at some point, the constable will be a necessity for this village moving forward because the state police or the sheriff's department will not enforce any village laws or village codes. They only can write New York state codes and New York state laws. So that's something we're moving forward, we're going to have to talk about. But I think it's, it's something that we need to have moving forward. When we get it, how we get it, and how it's described is what we got to work out.
Right, so what I, what I wanted to do, if it's okay with the board, is I can, you know, kind of cut and paste pull the section we have currently in our, I think it's section 96, I looked at it just earlier, which talks about the village constable, that it's, it's an appointed position in the village. I can tweak it a little bit, send it to, up to Chris or you mayor and review that, circulate it to the board, and we can have further discussions about, about those changes. It does need to be, it does need to be amended, just clearly.
Absolutely, I, I think like you hit the nail on the head. When that, when that was, uh, section was made, it was a conjunction with the police department. Now, we don't have a police department, we have to separate it and change the verbiage so we can have it as an independent agency and go forward.
Correct, but as you mentioned, Mayor, I mean, we've had this discussion before about that the problem, the issues with parking on Lake Street and other, other sections of the village that, you know, the sheriff's department's not writing tickets for it, the state police won't write tickets for it. I mean, if the village had an appointed constable to do that kind of thing, would certainly be beneficial to some of the businesses downtown or in other areas in the village parking lot where they can speak.
Yeah, we have problems in the wintertime. There are people parking on the street and the plows can't fall around the cars and stuff.
Right, right.
And, and you're absolutely right, moving forward, there, there is a use for it. There is no grand scheme for this constable, other than the fact that we need him for, as Trustee Arnold says, the wintertime. And as I said earlier, our parking lot is being misused, and some of our parking for our businesses is being misused. And we've had a number of calls, I know I have, and the administrator, from some of the business owners saying that their, the parking spaces were not being allotted fairly and correctly by certain individuals. So we've had to check it out, and this brings us to the subject of the constable moving forward, so.
Right, so if it's okay with the board, what I'll do is I'll, I'll pull the old section that's in our code. I'll make some revisions to it, and then send it to you for review, and then we can have further discussions about it.
Sounds good?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Yep.
Anything else, Trustee Arnold?
Yes, I have another thing. Just a, a thing for the railroaders that all, uh, up at the railroad station. Chris Brownbleed brought us the original call board that was at the railroad station. So all for the railroad, the people that like to see the railroad call board and stuff like that, we have it up there at railroad station. We just got it tonight for stuff like that, so.
Very good addition to our, our inventory.
Yes. Like to thank, yeah, permanent for the, for us, yeah. And also, I have, they all have a packet of the fire, the fire truck. The chief, Mike LeBlanc, and a few other firemen went down to Lancaster, Pennsylvania, and they looked at this truck, and it's in pristine, uh, good. And it's a 2010 stepson, and it's got 1,250 miles on it. And, I'll throw that out here. It's a pumper rescue truck, which is in very nice shape. They looked it all over. We had a meeting with the guy, a Zoom meeting with the guy at the fire station. He called and he went over the whole truck with us and stuff like that and everything. So Mr. LeBlanc can explain to the rest of you that he would like to.
So Thursday evening, I, myself and Maurice Snide, we drove down to Pennsylvania after we had the virtual Zoom meeting with the gentleman. About eight, nine of us attended that meeting. Drove down to Pennsylvania Thursday night, met the gentleman eight o'clock on Friday morning, took the truck out for a drive, looked it over real good, pumped, pumped the truck in, out of a pond, make sure it would draft, found a few minor issues with it. The place that this truck is, they're actually a used truck dealership, so you're not buying it from the fire department. So they have a full service shop there, a full paint booth, you know, a full paint booth and everything. So anything we found wrong with it, they're going to fix it. Some of the stuff's already got bent fixed, it was a bad seat, they've already had it reupholstered. There's a list in the con, the sale contract of the things that we found wrong that they're going to, that they would repair if we chose to buy the truck. The price of the truck also includes all the lettering to our specifications, so they've lettered the truck. Has it, will come with a DOT inspection, a current pump test. And also, since there wasn't a lot wrong with the truck, they said they would deliver it to Rouse's Point for free. And that's the price of the contract, so. It's a newer model truck, it's 2010, 16 years newer than our oldest truck that we would like to replace. It's also seven years newer than our, our frontline truck now. It's in really good shape, the paint is in pristine shape, like, like Benny said, it's got 12,000 miles on it. It's in great shape, it drove good, we didn't see any, any red flags with the truck. It also comes with a third-party, one-year limited powertrain warranty. So a little more reassurance.
I guess I'll, I'll start the questioning, because I'm, um, approximately six months ago, I sat down with you, Chief LeBlanc, and I sat down with Trustee Arnold, myself, the treasurer, the administrator, and we went over your budget.
Yep.
At that point, at that time, none of this was mentioned about the need for a new truck. And I'll have to take a backseat here, I've never been a member of the fire department. I know what we own for equipment, I, I've never fought a fire, and I praise the people that risk their lives and do that. But I'm a little confused, what has changed in six months? And I guess I'll refer to Trustee Pelkey as my information on this board because I, he's been in the fire department, I guess, over 30 years, he was a former chief. So we're going to be considering this, Trustee Pelkey. Do you believe that this is something that should be going, we should be moving on forward? Do we need it? Is it going to meet our needs, and why wasn't this brought up six months ago?
Well, it was brought up about a month ago, they were looking at a truck at Walden.
Correct.
It did not meet the specifications, there were some issues that were going wrong with it. What the sales pitch was, was eventually getting a pumper rescue and then eliminating one or two trucks. So everybody seemed to be on board with that. We're starting to consolidate some of our equipment because our numbers are down for our manpower, and we're limited during the days of whom can drive what.
Just so the people on camera understand, when you're talking pumper rescue, you're talking to be able to, to be able to carry the water and pump it, and also have your equipment, like your helmets and your air packs and everything, all in one truck?
Well, they all come with air packs. This truck is all set up, all the trucks are set up with your air packs, everything. It's the rescue tools, like the Jaws of Law use floor.
Okay, okay.
Some people are going with like pumper aerials, they're going with, you know, pumper ladder trucks, they're going with pumper rescue trucks to like minimize their equipment and consolidate all of that. So I guess the question, you know, that I would have is what truck is this going to replace?
So as we discussed a month ago, we would replace the engine and, and the tanker at this point.
So the tanker and 305?
Yes. Unless we could figure out how to put everything 306 on there, but I don't think we could.
Since we're, I got a foolish question, I can, I'm allowed to ask them. Since we're, we're doing, dealing with a dealer, right?
Yes.
Would it be a question to ask them if they would give us something on a trade-in? When we trade in with being a dealer, that we trade in one of our old trucks to offset some of the costs? Does this one really take it in, or have you discussed that, or?
I, I did, we could, I could ask him if he would take the truck. I mean, obviously, we would sell the trucks.
It might be better for us to try to trade it in than try to sell it outright to offset some of the costs. It's just a suggestion.
He may not take it because of the age, because it's a 1994, it's, it's 30 years old. So you're, you're starting to deal with trucks that aren't worth much money, so.
Usually 15, every 15 years, fire departments usually trade in their trucks.
15, 20 years.
You know, most of the time, it's stuff, it all depends how big the company is and stuff like that.
With a, with a truck that age, I don't know how much money he would have. He wouldn't give us, I, I don't think he could give us much money so that he can make money. I mean, obviously, they're good.
So you're thinking that we could sell it outright for more?
I, yes, I'm thinking we could sell it outright for more.
Okay, just a suggestion, I, I sense it was a dealer.
I, I can, I can send him the question and ask him that.
Okay, I mean, it won't hurt to ask.
I'll say, we have this, this truck, would you, do you want it, want to buy it from us?
Give us a credit and trade?
Sure, credit and trade, yes.
So my next question to our treasurer. How much money do we have in reserves for a new pumper?
Yeah, it's estimated to have 56, 7 by the end of that, the end of the fiscal year. $56,700.
So we put down 16, we're going to have 40 more, and then we're going to have to bond the rest? If that's what we decide to do?
Unless you know of any other sources of money.
And what is the bond rate, do you know at this point, Mr. Luternal?
No clue.
I have a question for Chief LeBlanc. 305.
Yes.
Did the village pay for that, or did the company pay for it?
The village paid for that.
The village paid for it?
That's village, sure.
And that was estimated about, what did we pay for that?
We paid $50,000.
$50,000 for that?
$50,000 plus some, plus the lettering and etc. So it was like 55, I think, when we got done. There's also, our SED, there's also the, um, the state revolving loan fund for fire departments that's available to, and that's a low interest rate, we've done that before.
Would Niagara Hoes be able to kick any money towards this vehicle?
Montgomery Hoes? It would be great if Niagara Hoes did.
Jesus, yes.
I'm making up, Rob, all right? We'd be happy for them to give us some money.
What, what, will they be able to kick any money?
We, we did broach that subject, but we could bring it up at our next meeting.
So we're short about $108,000?
Correct.
And whatever you sell those other two trucks for would go toward?
That.
Back toward that $108,000?
Correct.
And this revolving loan, are you familiar with that?
We, we did buy a fire department under that. 303 was bought, partially with that.
But is that just for new equipment, or is it?
No, used also.
Used also?
Yeah, up to $250,000, I think you can borrow it out.
And we could pay that loan off early? Say if we borrowed $100,000 and we sold these vehicles for whatever, can we put that money back on that revolving loan fund and pay it off early?
We were able to do that in the last one. You're talking years ago now, I don't know if the programs changed or not, but we can look into it.
I definitely would like to at least see what's available for monies. And if possibly Montgomery Hoes would help us out a little bit.
The thing though is, we don't get these trucks too often. You know, I mean, a truck like this.
I was just about to ask that.
Yeah, you just can't get these too often. I mean, this is a pretty, pretty neat truck, I'll tell you for the price, stuff like that. Usually they're $300,000, $350,000, you know, especially through a dealer, and, you know.
And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we shouldn't get it. I just, I want to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, how much money it's going to cost us, and how we move forward on this at that time.
So a basic new truck right now, John, you weren't here at the last meeting, a basic custom pumper, cookie cutter, demo truck are running $720,000. To replace our existing truck that, our existing stepson that we bought in 2003, the salesman told me a million dollars plus to replace that truck. So we're trying to do something economical and do things and save the community a lot of money.
What's the year of this truck?
2010.
And would be replacing the 1994 truck?
Correct.
Do we know about how much to spend in maintenance on the, on the rescue and the pumper that we currently have? Especially the, the 16-year-old one?
16-year-old one, we haven't spent, put a lot of money into that. 305?
Now, when we first got it, we replaced a lot of valves on it.
Did you?
Yeah, we had a lot of leaking valves, and we had to replace the.
But it's not used a lot, like with the frontline pumblers. Our 303 is our first truck out, and it's our biggest truck, and it's the most comfortable truck and inter-friendly.
Is that the 1994 truck?
No, 2003.
2003, that's our frontline one. And to replace that today is a million dollars.
At least a minimum, well, well over millions.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, as long as it starts to replace some of the vehicles that are there. I mean, if you're going to start comboing some of these, you know.
And John, Mr. Mayor, we're trying to consolidate the fleet.
Yes.
And, and we, and we have to start somewhere, we just can't. Or, or we could come to you and say, we need this, this, and this, this year, or next year, and then we can consolidate everything, and we can't afford to do it that way, it's just.
No, but I agree with Trustee Pelkey, we have to have a game plan, you, you, I am sure you do, I'm hoping you do, that we buy this truck and we know two trucks we're going to get rid of because we can, we can do without them, because this truck will, will fill in with these other true trucks we're doing in service for Ross's Point, and I'm, that's, am I right there or wrong in that?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, also what I, what I like about, not to cut you off, I'm sorry, what I like about is being a pumper rescue where you, it has the bigger compartments and you could put the rescue tools on there. Then someday, the next truck to, to be replaced is the big heavy rescue where you, you don't need such a big heavy rescue. I mean, we designed that thing when we had the whole fire district. I mean, we're running the 87, we're going all over. Now we're in our village. I mean, you need such a massive rescue truck, I mean.
Yeah, well, that's like the tanker, the tanker we don't use only for mutual aid. And most of the time, you know, we don't need mutual aid, so I mean, well, we do need mutual aid, but I mean.
Well, I mean, everybody is limited on manpower. And that's what we're having a problem with. That's why everybody is trying to combo some of these trucks.
Right.
And unfortunately, the fire districts, they have money, so they can afford to buy brand-new trucks and brand-new big trucks, specialized trucks. And what's nice for us is they're coming to mutual aid anyways, you know. Okay. So I, I like to at least have our SED get some hard numbers down for this loan and, and figure out where we're at.
Yeah, keep moving forward.
I understand there's a timeline here, but what's the timeline like? Did it give you 30 days?
To hold it, no, he, he wouldn't hold it past.
Two weeks, I think it was, right? He said, something like that?
He had said if I didn't go down this, last weekend, that he could guarantee it would be available at the end of this week. We've got lots of calls.
Because it's such a good truck that he just goes in and out.
I'm sure he'll hold it, if you give him his 10,000, 10% down payment.
If you give him 10%, it's our truck, yes, absolutely.
Would you recommend that? Me? As the money man?
I, I just have a quick question, Tom. Does this need to go out to bid, just to make sure that we're compliant because of the value?
Have you had to do that before with trucks and stuff, you bought trucks?
New trucks, not old, not used trucks.
Used trucks, you don't have to?
We didn't before.
Never did.
Okay, I, I don't know, I just want to make sure that we don't have any non-compliant issues.
Because there used to be a rule, if it was over a certain amount of money, we had to have three bids or somewhere along that line. Because I know when I worked at the town, we had to do that over a certain amount of money.
Such a unique thing. I mean, not going to get three bids on similar trucks somewhere.
No, not on used trucks.
Not on used trucks.
Okay, just as long as we're, just as long as we're following the law, that's all, Mr. Luternal.
You do though have to pass a, a resolution to spend those funds out of the capital reserve fund, that is subject to permissive, permissive referendum, which means if you get 10% of the number of voters at the last gubernatorial election, then make me put that on the ballot, there's a chance that would happen. And if they voted down, then you can't use that money. I mean, that's never happened before since I've been here, but just letting you know. You just can't go in and reach out and take that money out of the capital reserve while passing this resolution, and then you have to wait 45 days after the resolution to take that money out of the account.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
So how do we get the truck if we have only 45 days? Well, if you give them the, I mean, if they said, give them a deposit, basically.
Yeah, so, so one of the questions he asked me was, what's your timeframe for, for the money? Because I told him if we bought the truck, it would be a loan. He wanted to know what the timeframe was, only because he would move his shop schedule around. Because he said he could have the truck ready for us in 30 days, from the day we said we wanted it. But if we couldn't get him money for 60 days, he would adjust his shop schedule and put the truck aside and work on it after.
Yes, I mean, just some risk there, obviously. If you give him a deposit, it's basically your truck. And if there is a income of money, you're gonna lose your deposit, yes.
There you go.
So do we lose our whole deposit?
Don't get a loan? I don't know that. Have you seen the contract?
I haven't.
It's only a two-page.
Oh, a two-page.
I would, I would assume it kind of would, if you're gonna take it off the market, but...
Most of the contracts you have, you put down in the box, they don't fall through, you're gonna lose it. I don't think it addresses it.
I didn't see it, I don't know.
I mean, I'm assuming he, if he had a deposit and take it off the market, he might, he might would be willing to create a deposit back. I mean, you can ask him, but it doesn't say it in here.
We, we lose the whole deposit, that's...
Well, I don't know.
Would they take a percentage of that?
I, I don't know.
It's unfortunate, we just don't have a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that we just...
Sit around.
Right now.
Yeah, well, many people do.
No.
Especially our small village.
So what do you wanna, what do you wanna do next, gentlemen, in regards to that?
I mean, you wanna ask him that, saying, hey, listen, you know, we're trying to come up with some sources of income. You know, if we give you a deposit to hold it and something falls through.
And I, I can send him that question.
Just to see. You know, just tell him we're very interested in it, we just need to... We just gotta ask that question as well. Right? As well as the trade part of it.
Yep.
I guess if we had to, we could always call a special board...
You might go in and try and even look in.
Yeah, I gave you one.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I guess the worst-case scenario is if, if, if we get it all positive reviews from the treasurer, we can always call a special board meeting if it gets close to, you know, possibility of losing this vehicle, because what Trustee Arnold is telling me and the chief is telling me, and Trustee, it's a good deal, and, uh, you know, let's not lose a good deal, but we need to have more information as far as the financing from the treasurer, I believe, before we can move forward. Anybody disagree with that?
No.
You could approve the, the down payment tonight if you wanted to.
Yeah. Would you, I have another question for you, Arsen.
And how many years do you wanna take this out for? The loan out for?
I guess we need to find out what the interest is and what the payments are gonna be. Yeah, I mean, yeah, find out what the term would be.
Have to get a little more information on that.
I mean, the interest rates, the payment amount, if we do it over three years, five years, six years, eight years. I mean, we, we just, we don't have that information right now, and I don't know if we can make an intelligent enough answer for that before you...
Historically, Mike, how long do you keep a vehicle like this?
That's gonna be good for fifteen to twenty years.
So if you could go as high as ten years?
Yeah.
And finance. What'd you do in the last one?
We discussed at the last meeting that you weren't at, was that we could take the, the money we're putting in reserves now, the twelve thousand dollars a year, and use that to make the payments, so that we wouldn't have to impact our budget.
We're only putting seven thousand in.
What's that?
We're only putting seven thousand in.
Seven and the five from the ambulance, too.
So you're not gonna put any money in for a new ambulance?
It's gonna come from the billing. Is what they have already discussed. Using billing money to put into the reserve for the ambulance.
Who discussed that?
They talked about it.
I thought they were gonna use it to offset our EMS contract cost.
I've heard it both ways, so what else?
I don't, I don't want to be...
I mean, for, for five, if it's five thousand dollars, you could easily... Got off set.
Yeah, I mean, depending what comes out, if it says a hundred thousand and they put twelve thousand in, I mean, every year, I mean, talking, you know, less than ten years, but...
Seven minutes.
Would it be worth getting a loan for the whole hundred and sixty-four? Through the revolving fund? As long as we can pay it off early and then do the resolution to transfer the other monies? See where I'm going with that? And whatever money we get...
I, I mean, I think that's a bigger problem with the resolution.
Well, it takes time.
Well, yeah, I know that, but, you know, like, you know.
Yeah, it takes time. So is a loan, getting a loan quicker than doing the resolution and going that route? Then do the resolution and pay the loan off?
Depends.
Like, whatever money...
Depends what they need for a loan.
Whatever money we get for these other trucks, and hopefully Montgomery Hoes and Hook and Ladder will possibly help us out a little bit, all that money could go toward this loan.
I understand that.
Understand?
Is there any penalties for paying this loans off early?
No.
I don't even know if they allow it. They did allow it, but, like I said, I'll have to check into it.
That's what I mean, you know, there's still a lot of questions, so... Yeah, I understand what you're saying, that's, you know, then we take the forty-five days and when we get the money back, we're...
Then we can take the money out of reserves.
And pay it down.
Pay it down. Take the money from the trucks, pay it down. And whatever, hopefully Montgomery Hoes will help us out and pay it down.
Do we have a consensus what we wanna do moving forward?
Well, do we wanna... I guess we need to have him ca, I mean, we can approve the, the down payment with, you know, the option, I guess, if you call him or text him or email him, whatever, and say, you know, if we don't come up with the funds, do we get some of our down payment back?
If I can say...
Well, I don't think, there's not a problem coming up with funds, it's just how you're gonna fund it.
Right. So I think if we authorize the deposit this evening, that can at least be done to hold the truck, and then it gives Arsen some time to research this, this line and see what kind of terms we could get back on, on that, whether it's favorable, and then you can make a decision, okay, do we wanna take somebody out of the capital fund, or do we want to maybe fund this whole thing out of this revolving line, because maybe it's, rates are good and maybe makes more sense, and between other, you know, the sale of the other vehicles and other options you might have.
Okay, then, uh, I'll, I'll do, I'll do this, gentlemen. I'll make a motion that, uh, this board approves a, the ten percent down payment of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars, uh, for the initial payment of, uh, down on this vehicle until, and we'll table the rest of the funding until the treasurer comes up with the figures for, for us to decide whether we wanna move forward on it, how many years, which percentage rate and everything. We'll be more informed of how many years we wanna borrow the money for, what's it gonna cost us, what are we gonna budget each year for that. I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, so we could have a special meeting when you find all that stuff out.
Yeah, and I'll, and then we can have a special meeting if it comes to that. We have a, to get this done and make sure we don't lose the truck if it comes to that point.
Okay.
So, uh, the motion is that we pay the ten percent down payment of sixteen thousand four hundred. We authorize the fire chief to do this and go forward, and we wait for the information from the treasurer as far as the financing, the rest of it, uh, to fill the board in. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A roll call vote, Mr. Latjmar.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor Bounty?
Aye. The ayes have it. The board has approved the initial ten percent down payment of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars.
And will that check be released? Are we gonna release that check? Are we gonna release the check upon, uh, coven, the check?
Do you wanna...
See if we can get any of the back, just out of curiosity, deposit, but then, I mean...
That's the contract sale, right? Mayor Bounty?
Yes.
I would read the contract sale agreement that you're, that you're, um, abiding by for the motion. So that way you can sign it as the village authorized the buyer.
You want me to read the whole contract?
I would.
Yeah, okay, because I think the motion, not only for the deposit, but it would be the entry into that contract, too.
Would you agree, Tom?
Yeah, I do.
Do you want me to read the whole contract or the necessary, Tom?
I think certainly page one you should read.
Okay.
I don't know if you wanna get into the, the...
I, I supplied the DOT inspection, but I'll read the, the front page. Contract to sale, all parties set forth the following agreement and enter into this contract as follows. Command fire apparatus with corporate offices located at nineteen sixteen West Main Street, Mount Joy, Pennsylvania, one seven five five two, hereafter referred to as the seller. Licensed Pennsylvania vehicle dealer offers for sale, a U two thousand and ten Suffin pumper, VIN number one S nine A one H L D four A one zero zero three one two eight. Village of Ross Point, hereafter referred to as the buyer, with offices located at one thirty-nine Lake Street, P O Box one eighty-five, Ross Point, New York, one two nine seven nine. Buyer has inspected and agrees to enter into contract to purchase the unit, and seller agrees to the following terms and conditions of sale. The purchase price of the unit shall be hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars and shall be paid as follows: A ten percent down payment of sixteen thousand four hundred dollars due now, and the full and final balance is due upon completion of the unit at the seller's facility. Upon payment in full, the seller shall transfer full and clear title and all rights of ownership to the buyer. Supply a one-year third-party limited powertrain warranty. And, uh, anything else is included in it, but basically, we have the cost of the unit and the ten percent, and we have the seller and the buyer, which is Ross's point, and I think we're good. Unless you disagree with that, Mr. Renee.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
And then the board needs to agree at first to authorize you to sign as the buyer.
Correct. I make a motion, we authorize the mayor to sign as the buyer for the fire truck? Second?
Roll call vote, Mr. Latjmar.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor Bounty?
Aye. The ayes have it, authorizing me to sign the corresponding paperwork. We're good to go. Anything else, Trustee Arnold?
Uh, no, that's all I have. Thank you.
Uh, Trustee Menard?
I have a couple of things. Um, first, I just wanna remind everybody this week, this fall cleanup, and there will be no pickup after. I see a lot of people have their brush out on the side of the thing, so make sure you get it out there this week so that the village employees can pick it up. And my second thing is, I have a proposal here for the electric department for, from Risa Power out of Cicero, New York. They're proposing to come and check out, uh, a hundred and fifteen kilovolt circuit switcher. They're gonna inspect it, has a gas leak in it. They're gonna inspect it and report to us what needs to be repaired. And the price for all this work will be ninety-three, nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Mr. Decker, anything you'd like to add on that?
So basically, as it states, it's to, uh, inspect where the gas leaks are in a unit, put together a proposal of parts and labor beyond the price of the ninety-three hundred dollars to do that. They'll evacuate the gas, remove that, and then everything moving forward will be another proposal.
What's, the past question was because I, I don't know anything about this, but what's it, what are they, what unit or what are they inspecting?
This is a circuit switcher that sits in front of one of our large transformers in our substation. And what it is, it protects the transformer. So if there's any problems throughout the system, it would open up, and that's what this circuit switcher is designed. And it's designed for if we wanna take that transformer out of service, we can just turn the switch and it does it automatically. We installed two of these years ago, one for the H K border and one for the Waukesha. Those are our two biggest transformers. And, uh, back when Kirk Wilson was our engineer, he recommended these units to be put in. And they've been very helpful, and they're really your state-of-the-art. And unfortunately, this one unit has a small leak in it. The last time they came up, they changed some O-rings in it, and they thought it was good to go. But I think there's something a little deeper in it than just O-rings. Maybe one of the flares or something's not right, or, you know...
Maybe cutting the O-rings or...
Cutting the O-rings, we don't know.
The bottom, the bottom line is, if I understand you, if we don't fix it, it could lead to a more damage. Bigger problem, more damage.
More expensive problems. And this is like a preventive maintenance type thing. I mean, we can just keep adding gas to it and let the gas leak out, but there's no sense in it. We might as well address the problem and fix it because it's a safety issue and also it protects our equipment.
Yeah, that was, that was exactly my question. I just didn't know enough about it. That makes, that makes, that makes sense to get it.
And there's an urgency because we have a transformer that's offline right now?
Yes.
And the longer it sits without being operated and warm, especially in cold weather coming, it could potentially damage the transformer as well as that crack.
Yeah, we could end up with moisture in the transformer.
We wanna, we wanna keep all four of our transformers energized, and right now, this one transformer is offline because of this circuit switcher. That's why Mr. Decker proposed, or reached out to this company, and this is the proposal we got, and said, needs to be taken care of.
Okay.
And I'm glad you mentioned that, because my question was gonna be, did they reach out to us or did we reach out to them?
No.
We, I reached out to them. The company said, hey, you're, one of your things are leaking, and we didn't know about it, that'd be kinda odd.
No, uh, we, we knew we had a slight problem up there, because we kept losing gas and we kept adding gas to it, which we shouldn't be doing. Once you add gas, and top it off, it should be good, because of holes of pressure between the hot and cold, so there is, uh, uh, I don't think there's a major problem with it.
So the other transformer and circuit switcher have been there for how many years? And never had gas added, never had any issues, knock on wood?
Yeah.
So, I mean, this one has been a consistent issue?
Yeah.
Uh, there was, a few years ago, preventative maintenance done with the O-rings, but we're, you know, we check every Monday or Tuesday, and it's lost gas consistently every week.
This is a, this is a specialized company that just works on...
Right. Yeah, the gas alone or electric alone, both of those are, makes you wanna be sure, you know, if you're doing, combine them together. Really wanna be sure.
Well, this gas just mostly keeps the moisture out, that's all it's, uh, flammable like, yeah, so it's just, uh...
Unless anybody else has any more questions, then I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the payment to R E S A Services to do the inspection and report documenting and give us repair quotes for, to repair this transformer. So the, in the amount of nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I'll second that.
My only question was gonna be about the specialized work, but Trustee Pelkey answered that one, too.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mr. Latjmar.
Trustee Pelkey?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Southwick?
Aye.
Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Mayor Bounty?
Aye. The board has authorized R E S A to perform these services and report to us all repair parts and repairs necessary.
And that's all I have for you.
Okay, uh, Trustee Pelkey?
This is a report from the public works. The county will be here tomorrow for the blacktopping, train on drive, and the road toward the sewer plant. I think they're doing a little bit at the rec center here.
Right here, going down towards the fields.
Going down toward the field. I see that they did a, a cup out there.
Yeah, to get rid of some of the water spots.
Yeah, okay, definitely, good. So that's the report I have from the public works. Uh, I need an executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of going to the executive session to, uh, discuss a particular employee, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, we'll go to executive session at the end of the meeting. Anything else, uh, Trustee Pelkey?
No, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Trustee Southwick?
I have a couple of things. Uh, I'll get the small one out of the way. First, I have an authorization to travel for David Carter to Burlington for Vermont for an exam. This is just, he wants to use the car and, so sixty miles of mileage, but... But there's no hotel, meal, or registration or anything.
Just to use the village vehicle.
The cost of the village other than using the car. I have a big motion to authorize Dave Carter to travel to Burlington for, for an exam.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, Mr. Latjmar.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor Bounty.
Aye, the travel is authorized.
The other thing I have, a couple meetings ago, we brought up the idea of a contract for EMS billing, it was mentioned a couple times in the previous discussion on, on the fire truck. I think, I think now's a good time, I need to have a discussion on it, and if we're ready to move on it, to move on it. Uh, my own thoughts are, other municipalities, they do contract with independent, independent billing companies with EMS, and this is doing something like that, so we have a bit of money coming in, and coincidentally enough, the meeting where we brought this up, New York State, that same, we passed a law allowing EMS billing in the event that the service doesn't take place at a hospital, because sometimes it it's better to carry out whatever medical needs, has to happen right at the scene. And New York State made that change, so, and I don't see anything in the contract that doesn't account for that, so those are my concerns, I'm gonna address them.
And everybody should have obtained a copy of the contract, because Trustee Southwick requested that prior to, uh, entering any type of agreement, so I, I provided everybody with a con, a copy of that two weeks ago.
Did you have any more correspondence with the guy that you're talking with on the billing, with any, any concerns?
Not at this time, so as I indicated before, talking with Bill, so we can start billing immediately, um, we will have to apply for Medicare and Medicaid. Um, Medicare billing can, happens, um, faster than Medicare. Um, he said Medicare, or Medicaid can take up to six months or longer, Medicare, um, will happen probably within sixty to ninety days.
And at that point, this is a clarification, this is EMS billing of insurance, insurance or Medicare or Medicare, Medicaid, not the, not the patients.
And, and I just wanna say this to the residents, uh, anybody who doesn't have insurance, or, uh, the insurance doesn't cover the full bill is not gonna be threatened with any type of lien or collection service, uh, that's not the idea of this, uh, at all. The idea is that, uh, we have to offset some of our costs as far as you, you operate our ambulance and equipment, uh, the cost of the drugs, the cost of the uh, the fuel, the, and everything else associated with it, this has been going on around, uh, the county and the state for quite a while. Uh, Champlain EMS service does the same thing that we're doing, and I can assure the residents that, uh, nobody is gonna be, uh, threatened of any bills for any balance due. Does the, the rest of the board agree with that?
Yep.
Yeah, some under, understanding that the insurance, what the insurance pays is what they get.
That's correct.
And also, whatever Medicaid or Medicare pays, that's what they get.
There you, there you go, 'cause we don't want anybody just to hesitate to call nine-one-one, to use the service on the weekend because of, of worrying about paying a bill, that's ridiculous, we're not gonna, uh, we're not gonna pressure anybody in that regards. What we're trying to do is recover some income from Medicare, uh, Medicaid, some other insurances that people may have, but a, at the end of the day, nobody is gonna be threatened with any collection service at all, and this board is, rest assured, telling the residents that this is not gonna happen.
There shouldn't be anything in their pocket.
It's not gonna be any different than if, uh, Champlain Moore's EMS does a transport right now. So we're following the same, the same procedures that they're, that they're going through. So, the, the patient will receive the bill because sometimes the provider will send the check directly to, um, the patient, and then they would just have to forward payment to the billing company, as far as what they receive from the insurance company. Because the insurance company may not directly send payment to the billing company.
Well, if there's ever a problem in the future, then I would suggest, uh, if a resident's concerned, to call you as the administrator or me as the mayor, and we will do, uh, everything within our power to make sure that there is no misunderstanding in regards to this unauthorized collection service, so.
Or the chief.
What's that?
Or the fire chief.
Or the chief.
Thanks for the three-three-nine.
Anything else, Trustee Southwick?
Uh, Charles, do we want to table this for another meeting, or do we wanna, what's the feeling, do we want?
A question, Mr. Administrator?
He was just asking about, uh, if somebody has copays, but they, so whatever amount the, uh, provider pays for the transport is what we co, is all the fees that the, uh, that the village will collect.
We're accepting full.
Okay.
Does the board wanna move forward and vote on this tonight?
I think we should get it going.
And I need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, the village authorizes the, it would be the mayor to sign on behalf, but.
You need to enter the company that we're going into, Nick?
Yes.
And the fee that they are going to, uh, charge for their services? I think it's ten percent.
Do you want me to know what page that's on?
Five, says ten percent.
Yeah.
Commission and fee of ten percent.
Then, I'll make a motion that the village entered agreement with Multimed billing service incorporated at the commission fee of ten percent. And that we authorize the mayor to sign the contract?
Perfect.
I'll say, I'll second that motion. Roll call vote, Mr. Latjmar.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor Bounty.
Aye, the ayes have it, we authorize the billing. Uh, anything else, uh, Trustee Southwick?
I just wanna thank, uh, Fire Chief Levant for being here to answer any questions that we had about the fire truck. Just, just based entirely on the cost, I was a bit, a bit hesitant on it, but just through the discussion that we as a board had, that, that addressed most of those concerns, so, I'm thankful for the fruitful, fruitful discussion.
Very good.
And that's all I have.
Okay, um, anybody else have anything they wanna say, if not, then I need a motion.
Can you add one thing, so I, I think we also need to have, uh, to make a motion for an executive session, except about pending litigation.
Okay, well, I'll, uh.
I'll second that.
All those in favor of, uh.
So you, so you need to make a motion. I'll make the motion to ex, enter an executive session, discuss pending litigation, thank you.
Okay, I'll second that.
All those in favor of recessing, going to the executive session to talk about pending legal matters, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, the ayes have it. Without further ado, then, I need a motion to recess so we can go into executive session.
I'll make a motion, we go into recess.
Second.
All those in favor of recessing, go in the executive session, say aye.
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 All those opposed say no, uh, the ayes have it, we'll recess, go to executive session. Camera on, Chris?
It's on. I make the motion, we go into regular session?
Second.
All those in favor of going back into regular session, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, back into regular session, uh, just for the camp, people at home to know, we didn't take any action after we discussed a particular employee.
Do that, guys.
We, we table that, we will discuss it again, uh, at, at a future date. The other thing that I want Mr. Renee to, uh, put in, um, his own words, that, two, two items we have to correct for the May sixth, two thousand twenty-four meeting.
Um, so, um, as we, uh, discussed, uh, during executive session, coming out of executive session, there was a meeting, uh, that was held on May sixth of two thousand twenty-four, village board meeting. Um, there were a couple of actions taken at that meeting, which, um, essentially, there were some issues with as, as far as how the actions were taken. In particular, um, at, at, I think, May sixth, two thousand twenty-four meeting, there's a shared service agreement for code enforcement officer with the town of Champlain action, it was taken that, um, was taken in error, um, it was actually an error of three minutes, and then via creation of a position of constable within the village or else a point. There was an issue with respect to that action, um, as that action was, was taken, it seemed to be because of, um, it was not raised as a proper issue for the executive session. And we came out and that action was passed, so I would ask the board to basically pass a motion that those two actions taken at the May sixth, two thousand twenty-four village board meeting, um, be annulled, vacated, and set aside as they were not accurately taken at that meeting, properly taken at that meeting.
So move.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Mr. Latjmar.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor Bounty.
Aye, the ayes have it, the, uh, the May sixth, two thousand twenty-four meeting has been, uh.
Those two items at that.
Those two items will have, uh, have been corrected. Anything else, Mr. Renee, in regards to that?
No, no, that's the, the, regarding that.
I need a motion to authorize the administrator to advertise on the workplace indeed, and use our credit card, which I believe is a hundred dollars to advertise for a linesman at, at a rate of thirty-two dollars per hour.
Second that.
Roll call vote, Mr. Latjmar.
Trustee Pelkey.
Aye.
Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Southwick.
Aye.
Trustee Arnold.
Aye.
Mayor Bounty.
Aye, the ayes have it, you are authorized to advertise on indeed, using our credit card to pay that, uh, advertisement bill for a linesman at thirty-two dollars an hour rate.
Thank you.
Anything else, gentlemen, if not, then I need a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no, the ayes have it, thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good evening, gentlemen.
You too.
Always in a measurement, bro.
It's been fun.
That moron.
Look like you're the bad one, it wouldn't work.
Jesus Christ. You look like you could. You look like you could. Lady Ray.
All right, well, email after email, you tell me.